My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who's called to order?
There's some seats I've fronted.
Hi there, who is this?
Yeah.
And how do you like?
It's me.
Motion approved, that's the last thing.
I'll second that. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I would stay out of this here.
An extension. We do have an employee, John Nagley, that's going to receive a five-year anniversary. John is not here today. We can thank him for his service.
Motion to approve item number six is listed on your agenda.
We need more chairs. Any more chairs can be brought in.
Here we go. John?
Okay, motion for item six, I'll second that. To approve the cash disbursements and wire card transfers. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carry.
I make a motion to approve item number seven as listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item seven. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carry.
Motion to approve item number eight is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. Motion to approve item eight by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Hall. Questions or comments?
Okay. Okay, um, dispose of, does that mean like sell it or sell for scrap or?
On eight.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, you have a question on eight?
Yeah, what is the, you know, explain to me what this means, assignment within P O T grant transportation program?
It's the Susquehanna County Transportation Program that is operated by TreeHab. And we have DOT grants, which you do online, that's why it's called DOT. Grants online through PennDOT to get monies for vans, transportation vans, operating costs, money, things like that, maintenance. And somebody has to authorize because the money comes to us and is passed through to TreeHab for loaning the program.
Just TreeHab or there are other recipients of that?
No, it's just TreeHab.
TreeHab, okay, thank you.
You have questions?
Is personnel included in any of this?
Not, I do not, so there's no personnel.
Is there personnel in the DOT grants? I think it's just operating costs.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question. Yes, it's, they're entering financial information or information about the vehicles, it's not...
That's not going to do it.
I've never seen any money coming through.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item nine?
I make a motion to approve item number nine as listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion to approve item nine by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco. Questions, yes?
Yeah, same question. Does that mean like to sell it or sell for scrap or just toss it out?
Well, we don't toss anything out. We either try to sell it first and then if we can't sell, then it goes to scrap. All in favor?
Aye.
So carry.
Motion to approve item number 10 is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Item 10, motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren to approve item 10. Questions or comments?
Please explain that one. What is, uh, exonerate tax collectors from collecting county, I mean, it looks straightforward, but what, who's handling that one and who's going to explain it? Go ahead.
No, I'm handling it.
Oh, okay.
I handle it every year. That's my job.
So this is unpaid taxes?
Mm-hmm.
And we're exonerating, which means we're doing what?
They're turning them over to us and we collect them.
To collect, okay, so they're going from the tax collector? Okay, perfect.
Exonerates the tax collector from the further collection.
Perfect, got it. Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
So carry.
I make a motion to approve item number 11 as listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item 11. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carry.
I have a question on 12. Is Sherry working there still yet?
Yeah, she has a part-time position or had a part-time position there and Sue moved her to a full-time position. That was open.
Starts the six-month probation period again?
For that position, yes.
Okay. So the time she has there is part-time, does not count towards the full-time?
No.
Okay. Motion to approve item number 12.
I'll second that.
Is listed on your agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carry. Item 11?
I make a motion to approve item number 14 as listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item 13 on the agenda. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carry. Item 14?
Motion to approve item number 14 as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren to approve item 14. Questions or comments?
Do we know what reason was given?
Person.
And when what's?
All the law has said is that he's resigning, yes.
What position did he hold?
He's Deputy Sheriff. All in favor?
Aye.
So carry. Item 15?
I make a motion to approve item number 15 as listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item 15. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carry.
Motion to approve item number 16 as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren to approve item 16. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carry. Item 17?
I make a motion to approve item number 17 as listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item 17. Questions or comments?
What position does she hold?
She works in the office up at Judge Hollister's office.
What does she do?
She's clerk typist, receives payments, things like that.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
So carry. Item 18?
Motion to approve item number 18 as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion to approve item 18 by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren. Questions or comments? Yes.
Why an outside study for 26,000 Kansas people that run the services here do that study on this?
Now, this group is specialized in doing these studies, plus they're all connected with Pima and Harrisburg and a lot, most of the funding is covered through Pima to do this study. And they'll give us a better report, yes.
And why does the study have to be done?
Well, because as I've said before in previous meetings, our 911 center in two years is completely outdated technology-wise and we need to do the study to see what needs to be done as far as, you know, what type of equipment? Should we consolidate equipment? Should we consolidate services? What should we do? So a study's going to tell us what we should be doing in this county and then we can move forward from the study.
And all the funding is coming from outside of our county?
Outside what?
And the funding is coming from where?
Funding comes either through the 911 wireless money or it comes through the Act 13 money we're into. So I come from local taxpayer. Yes.
When, right here it says consolidation study.
Mm-hmm.
Is that consolidation within the county or with other counties?
Well, it's a possibility with other counties, but it could be consolidation of just equipment. Um, there's, I think it's seven counties in the western part of PA consolidated equipment at the same cost that way. So each person didn't have their own standalone system. Uh, there are some counties that have consolidated services completely, so we need to do a study to find out what's in our best interest here, for the county, best interest for the taxpayer. All in favor?
Aye.
So carry.
I make a motion to approve item number 19 as listed on your agenda.
I'll second that. Motion to approve item 19 by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Hall. Questions or comments? Yes.
Why?
The 35,000 that's being sent over is to help with the shortage that TreeHab has with the fuel grant money for this, for the elderly.
For what period of time?
Until that funding is used up. It's for this winter, it's for the rest of this winter. Yes.
Now, it's just for the elderly? For fuel assistance?
They administer the program. Whoever qualifies for the, for the fuel grant money.
You mean the same thing like Laheep? Is it connected with Laheep?
I don't think so, no.
So this is a separate program for fuel assistance?
Yeah.
Does that come from the Act 13 monies or from tax revenues?
This will come from Act 13.
Why, why don't you, why doesn't, why don't you list it on the?
It says, it says Act 13.
Oh, I'm sorry. Apologize.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, item 20?
I make a motion to discuss the recycling plant.
I'll second that. I think that based on the condition of the recycling plant and based on the, on the financial status of the recycling plant over the last 10 years, it's time to conduct a study to see about privatizing it and getting out from underneath the county. We've lost on the average of over $60,000 a year in operations. The facility is in a forest condition, yet most of the equipment is breaking down. The state has said that grant money is going to be few and far between to replace stuff. Uh, it's going to become a very cost-expensive program for the county. I think that we should look at a study to privatize, private sector handle it. It's been proven time and time again, the private sector has better ability to run recycling plants than county organizations. I'm not saying that we shouldn't promote recycling. I think it's our duty to continue to promote recycling in the county and push forward to try and get more people to do it. Um, part of the issue there is with our current facility, we're just not getting the support, we're not getting the volumes. Uh, the amount of material we get and the different types of material is not supporting the revenues that we need. And that's even using employees in the jail at a reduced rate and we still can't at least break even. So it's just becoming a very costly expense. So I think we need to move forward with a, with a study, feasibility study and see where we go.
Make a motion.
It's been voted on the last one.
I'm sorry. So let's vote on a motion to discuss it. All in favor to discuss?
Aye.
Make a motion, we look into privatizing.
And I'll second that motion.
We've lost a million dollars with that thing over the years.
But I do think it's a recycling plant's not all the good and I know that the fire and beer is pushed to there, ever since it's been going. Well, we're not saying that recycling's not important.
You can't get any grants at all?
What's that?
You can't get any grants?
We're getting what we can, but the state's already saying with their cuts in budgets, they're going to cut even more. And all the equipment is old now. And they'll only pay, at the most, they'll pay 80% on the replacement of equipment. And we just can't function that way and continue to throw more money into it. We have to look, northeast part of the state or northeast part of the county's taking their materials to, to Atholaken because they can get better, better funding out of it. So we're losing that volume. Southeast parts moving theirs down into Stranton, we're losing that volume. It's, it's nice saying we have our own recycling plant, but the problem is it's not cost-effective. There's other ways to do it and still be productive at it. Uh, we're still going to push forward and make sure the recycling is done, that's part of our goal, and still going to push forward to make sure that the residents have the ability to recycle. And more people need to recycle. It's atrocious. You drive by five houses and you see one recycling bin out. You know, these landfills can't keep handling all this, so.
They ought to do a better job of cleaning up the stuff they take there too.
Right, so, yes.
And who's funding the recycling plant now? Any state money?
State money does fund it, yes.
How much of it is state money? What's the percentage?
I can't give you the exact percentage. Short about, it's short about $70,000 a year from funding it.
You mean state money comes?
Between what the state funds and what it brings in in revenue.
So does the county fund any of it?
Yeah, we're funding right now $70,000 a year to fund it.
So if the state is funding it and with all the Act 13 money, can't you use Act 13 money?
Not for the recycling plant, no.
And then the state is now getting money from all the gas wells and all of the fees that they have, the impact fees, so maybe they'll have more money to give?
Well, no, the state's already telling us they're going to give us less money next year.
Less money in what way, for what?
In grant money for the recycling solid waste.
So why isn't there enough money when we have so much, thousands of gas wells and we're supposedly floating with lots of money and we're supposed to be a rich state? Why is there no money even for recycling?
Is there any other questions?
No.
Yes.
What do other counties do around this area?
Well, it varies from county to county. Some counties have hired private firms to run their facilities. Uh, other counties are looking at consolidations and trying to figure out what they can do. But a lot of the other counties right now are in the same boat we are, they're starting to study to find out what they can do to try and bring the cost under control.
Thank you.
Are all the other recycling centers around us also managed by the county or any of them privatized?
The only recycling center managed by the county is the one here, the one up in Atholaken, New York, which is, I think it might even be just across the line is a privatized one. Lackawanna now is run by a private company, even though Lackawanna controls it, and I'm not sure what's going to happen down there now with all the changes they're doing.
So you have resources to go to when it comes to?
Yeah, yeah. The idea is, is, you know, we'd like to see somebody continue to operate this facility. If private industry can come in and run it and take and diversify the facility, bring in, you know, metals and things like that and do more things with it and make it profitable, then, then they'll be able to maintain that facility. But if at some point that facility can't maintain, then it's making sure that we have the ability to get the recycling to the places where it needs to go.
If you hire a private firm and it privatizes and we're allegedly going to save money?
Mm-hmm.
Do you foresee in any way, shape or form a fee imposed upon the residents to bring their, bring their refuse to the recycling center?
No, I don't.
Would be, would you, would you be as a board opposed to that?
I'm opposed to it, yeah.
Okay.
I am.
As well as I.
If we privatize, would the prisoners at the jails still be able to go over and work there as they are?
It would have to be worked out with a new owner, for new owner purchases, yes.
The prisoners are still new now, right?
What's that?
The prisoners are still new now, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
A private company would own and operate the entire facility? They'd own the land? They'd make the purchase of the entire?
Absolutely.
Okay. Now, why would a private company be interested in something that's losing 70,000 a year?
Private companies have the ability to take and diversify and make losing propositions gain propositions.
Motion to adjourn?
No, we have comments. We have a whole bunch of comments. Are you kidding?
Okay, all in favor of those current motions?
Oh.
Aye.
We're not even finished with motions. You're awake or what? We're not even finished with the emotions.
Public comment now. Mr. Stevens, go ahead, please.
Well, to start off, I'm very unhappy to hear that former Governor Tom Ridge is a spokesperson for the natural gas industry. Former Governor Rendell is a spokesperson for the natural gas industry. Current governor is not a spokesperson getting paid, but he's acting like it unfortunately. Um, former secretary of, hanger of the D E P gas industry. Right when the transition from Rendell to Corbett, 12 high-level D E P officials left their positions to work for the gas industry. Um, I'm getting a little concerned that, that people are using state-elected positions to, as a precursor to getting positions in the natural gas industry that pay two or three times more. That concerns me. Maybe we should look at, at statewide, we should look at putting a two-year hold if you want to go work for the industry. You've got to wait two years after elected office. That might cause them to not be giving them away. So this is from November 28th. You guys passed it. I spent the last two months researching this, the Susquehanna County Hatters Materials Emergency Response Plan for unconventional well sites. We didn't read it out loud when you, we didn't read it out loud when you passed it, but I read it. And I'm amazed to see how much is in this document. That document alone says, whereas the potential exists for life-threatening incidents while these materials are transported, utilized and stored. It talks about pipelines, it talks about truck traffic, it talks about gas well incidents, it talks about explosions, it talks about emergency hazards. I'm reading this, then the document itself, as I brought up before, which is the Susquehanna County 2012 Hazard Mitigation Plan, which by the way is a legal document passed by every community in Susquehanna County, I'm going to highlight just a couple. The Human Made Hazards, Section 4.3.12. Susquehanna County primarily experiences two kinds of environmental hazards. Hazardous materials releases at both fixed facilities and in transit, Marcellus shale gas well incidents. Hazardous materials releases can occur at facilities or along transportation routes. These releases can result in injury and death and contaminate air, water and soils. Activities associated with Marcellus gas well sites can cause fire and pollute streams and drinking water. That's one to highlight. Here's the, on page 119. I'm hoping you guys have read this completely. It's a 218-page document. Over 40% is all about oil and gas incidents and what the response would be. Section B on page 119, since gas well production is increasing in the Commonwealth, there have been several incidents of well accidents. Comprehensive reporting of gas well incidents, accidents is currently not in place and a database that tracks all accidents is not available. Furthermore, reliable nonpartisan data regarding past occurrences of gas well accidents in the Commonwealth is extremely difficult to obtain. I'm telling you, every time you come to these meetings, we're giving you the information. We're telling you things that are happening today in real time, not something that we have to wait for the state to report a year or two later. By the way, Franklin Forts, we're clicking on 15 months, not an answer from the D E P about what's going on. And they've allowed W P X to come and drill in my community. 16 well pads getting cleared. Four wells already have been drilled, or four pads have already been drilled. In my neighborhood, we still don't know whether W P X, we're not saying they did, whether they caused the problems at Franklin Forts. And the state is refusing. Call them up. Call the D E P, call Colin Connolly. Hey, we don't have that information. Are we going to have it in a month? No, six months? We don't, we can't tell you in a year? So we're on hold. We're not on hold on the drilling, we're on hold on what happened. Let me switch to Demick. Demick, after a year and a half of being double-tongued talk by the industry, by Cabot, the state said, you will fix it or you will stop drilling in the state of Pennsylvania. That's what they had to tell them. And guess what? They started acting interested again and doing things. I think we need to use this document. I'm going to use it. But there's pictures too, pretty pictures of an entire half of a road falling off. And it specifically talks about the dangers every day that all of us to come here, I'm driving through potholes, I can't believe, on 29. Potholes on 167 that'll tear the front end of your car off, you have to steer around them. Why are we doing that? All this money coming in from Act 13 and I have to worry about ripping the front end off of my vehicle for everyone in this building today? That's real time, what's going on? It's in the document we passed. If you passed it, then you have power. Here's what I'm getting ready to do. I'm getting ready to declare all these things that are listed in this an emergency and tell anybody in this room and anybody in this county to call and declare it one. I've got an eight-foot hole emergency in the front of my house. If that's the only way we can do it, the 911 responders, they have to come out and look at it. And guess what they have to do? They have to log it, unlike the D E P who will hang up on us, ask people in this room. You call them up, tell them about a real-time problem, they say, thanks for playing and hang the phone up on you. They don't care, but 911 can't do that. By law, they have to log it, they have to respond, and if there is a problem, have them go to somebody's house that's on a water buffalo and have a cup, glass of water handed to them from their faucet that looks like mud. And when they say there's no problem, drink it right in front of me. No, I won't. That's an emergency then. Here's the problem we're having. We got this beautiful document that talks all about the problems that are occurring and have occurred, including the problems in Demick on Carter Road, the explosion at the compressor station, the light drip, all these incidents, and we're supposed to ignore it. We're not ignoring it anymore. So I'm going to get a Pima involved if our own county agency will not. They're not treating it as emergency. Charlene Mosier did not do it, even though she helped write this document. And Bob Stout is a nice guy, or Steve Stout, but he's powerless. We're not powerless. That document tells us we can do something. So I'm empowering everybody in this room. We're going to be the first responders then. Just like they tell me it's none of your business if some neighbors, something happens on a neighbor's property. Yes, it is. If my neighbor's away for a week on vacation and their house is on fire, it is my problem to call up and dial 911 to say it's on fire. They're not there to say it. So if we find a problem, if it happens here in Susquehanna County and it's a problem with any of this on this document, I'm declaring today that everyone should be dialing 911 and reporting it. That's the only way we're going to get it. And the embarrassment is when D E P will not show up, but first responders will, maybe the D E P will start doing their job and protect us like they're supposed to. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I also want to show something that Bradford County has done and I'd like Susquehanna County to do. This is the map of all the gas wells, which is over 1,000 in Bradford County. You can get this for $15. The county is doing this. I'd like our county to map all our wells, 650 and counting in our county. They're going to fill up our county with wells. I've called other counties west of here, 4,000 wells in one county. We are only 20% or less developed. We're going to be filled up like this. Do we want to live like this? What do you think about this? Would you like to make a map for us like this? Can you order a map like this so we can see how industrialized we are getting, week by week, month by month, year by year? What do you think, Mr. Jean Greco?
I'd like to have that map.
Would you like to?
Yeah.
Can we have one for Susquehanna County?
I wonder how they got that made?
Yes, can we find out?
Why don't you do that?
Can I do it? Can any of you do it?
Well, who wants? The people's all have.
This is going to show how developed we are.
I've seen one. I've not seen one like this for Susquehanna County. I'm curious as to how Bradford County got one.
Yeah, so we'll find out. Can you find out or you have clerks and secretaries and yourselves? Can you find out, or you have some clerks and secretaries and yourselves, and I will find out. We'll compare notes for next time. How is this being done?
I don't think we are doing it.
And you're not doing it right now?
No, no, I think we are. The gas companies are doing it.
This is from, I think, the Development, Economic Development Board?
I haven't seen one like this. That big.
It'd have the stamp, county stamp.
But how about the Economic Development Board? They have a whole bunch of maps. They have a whole bunch of maps. These are, they're all wells here, all these sites, these are all units and wells, all the green, over 1,000 wells, and they're only 25 percent developed. Over 1,000 wells. This will be filled, fill the county. And then the compressor stations, every two to four miles, dozens of them, and then hundreds of miles of pipelines. We will be totally industrialized. Will you live here, Mr. Jean Greco? Will you continue to live here if we have thousands of wells? And you have five compressor stations? Five compressor stations are just laying in record for us, like, and, and so how do you feel about that? How do you feel about compressor stations?
Excuse me, excuse me. You need to back, work through the table, you need to go back and sit down.
And you also have, oh, shoot. Sorry, go ahead. Watch over here. And you also have, Mr. Jean Greco, over 500 acres, and you have thousands of tons of drilling waste that's come off of your property and going to New York and Ohio and Pennsylvania. How do you feel about the drilling waste? That's endless, tons of it. Can you do something about it? Why pollute? From your land, you're over 500 acres, why are you polluting all of us? Can you do something about it?
I have a question for you.
Excuse me, excuse me. Sir, is not a debate between the two of you. You got questions, take it outside with each other. Do you have a question?
Yeah, well, the only thing about the map, the only thing I would ask commissioners to consider is the cost involved in producing a map that's going to be obsolete as the wells continue to be produced.
Well, they're updating it regularly. This is the February 2013 map.
Any other public comment? Motion to adjourn. A motion to adjourn by Christian Jean Greco.
I'll second that.
Second, all in favor?
I'd like to see.
All right. We have a salary board meeting. Call meeting to order at 9:28. Officers are present. Item three.
Motion to approve minutes from 1/23/2013, salary board.
I'll second that. Motion by Treasurer Benedict, seconded by Commissioner Hall to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Questions or comments? Yes.
Well, a minor one that you guys can correct. It says, on the minutes, it says 124 on the minutes that are, you're approving. And secondly, is that, is that the meeting in which Solicitor Maher got a $10,000 raise?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay. Well, it's still obscene.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All in favor?
Hi. I was standing, I wasn't here. Thank you.
All in favor. Item four.
Motion to approve item number four is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. Motion to approve item number four by Christian Jean Greco and by Commissioner Hall. Questions or comments? Yes.
Why is the entire Susquehanna County Conservation District being eliminated?
It's, for longstanding years, we've had a memorandum of understanding with the group so that you understand the soil conservation, even though Susquehanna County Soil Conservation is a state agency, it's run out of the state, there is a local board. We cannot come to an agreement as far as the terms on the MOU. At this point, the Board of Directors, the agency itself, wants to have total control of the employees as well as the funding streams that come in. The county's requested, of course, that we maintain control of the employees because they're county employees. In order to qualify for our health insurance because of union contracts, they have to be under the county direction, not under a separate agency. Also, the funding stream's coming back. We requested additional funding coming back from the Act 13s and other funding to be sent to the county to be used for administrative salaries and salaries and wages. We cannot come to an agreement on that. So, all parties have agreed that pretty much it's in the best interest for the group to become their own agency like other counties have done. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Stevens.
So, the Conservation District was, you were part of it for county, working with the state. Now, we're turning it back over to the state for them to run it?
Well, it's always been a state organization. It's not a county organization. It's a state organization operating into the county, has a county, county Board of Directors that oversee the organization itself, that's that policy and procedure. So, they have the control.
Are we doing this because of how ineffective the state has been at doing this? So, we had a, we were actually?
No, that has nothing to do with that. Like I said, the two issues it has to do with is, one, in order for county employees to be, have health insurance, it's required by law, or required by insurance companies that have to be under the direct supervision of the county supervisors. They can't be under anybody else's supervision. There's also union contracts, and the other issue, of course, is the financial, that, you know, we feel that funding should be coming back to support the service.
So, this was brought up before in the meeting, but are we going to do anything as an overriding to our own? It's a county?
Well, we don't do anything now. We have really no control over soil conservation. They're their own separate entity. So, all's we've had is our employees working for them, and we've had some control over the employees that were there. But the employees themselves need to be under the direction of that board, and that board can better administer those employees because they know exactly what they need to do with their organization.
With this, representing us, with this elected body, at least, if they're going to do, if we're going to do this, send a letter to the State Agency of Conservation because they're doing the worst job I've ever seen?
We've been in contact with the State, they've been in contact with the State Agency.
I mean, a resolution by the three of you is saying that we're doing this because of the conflict, but we don't think the state's doing their job at all in what's happening here, we know that. That's why most of these people are upset. I'm sure the same is the DEP and EPA employees are saying, "What are we doing here?" So, hopefully, we can do something from a resolution if we're going to do this to tell the state, "Get the job done, or else we're going to start looking elsewhere for somebody to come in and look at our problem."
You got a comment?
I'd like to comment because I'm the Commissioner of Director on the Conservation District. And over the years, in the nine years that I've been the Commissioner of the Director, we have delegated programs through the state, through DEP, that we must do, and the money has decreased over the years, and the county has had to pick up more and more money over the years. So, as these programs continue to be needed, and given the situations in the county with the environment and water situation, soil and erosion and everything else with the gas industry, they're needed even more. But these delegated programs are not funding what really needs to be funded. There's not enough money to fund these. And the soil conservation in every county is a subdivision of the state, a political subdivision of the state, just as we are or township or borough. So, they can run on their own.
Well, I'll add to that. Thank you, Mary Ann. I'll add to that, that if we do not speak up, if these problems are being seen, not only at the town level, the county level, and the state level, and we don't speak up and raise our voices up, they're going to think that we like this. And I don't know, not many people in this room know what's going on. I mean, when they do the pipeline on my property, mud running for months into the Susquehanna River, I mean, it's ridiculous. Nobody was putting the socks in, the preservation, and all that. We have to, you have to catch them doing it wrong and make the state come in and fix it because we have no oversight. I would say, if it's happening locally, if you see something, say something. If it's happening locally, we need to stand up. If you have no power to do it, at least you can shine a light on it. Anyone in this room could get cameras up at a real bad area and show it. That embarrasses the state, they'll come and do something about it. I found it worked very well in the creek in my backyard, seven times with the media there. They didn't like it. They got upset, but I said, "I see you're doing the fix, even though you're upset about it. Let's shine a light on it." That's at least, very at least, the power of the county can say, "We don't like what's happening in our county, the state's in charge of it. Hey, Governor, or Secretary Panzer, get down here and do something about this." That would be, that would be very helpful to us.
Bruce, on the flip side of what Mr. Stevens said, I understand the financial aspects of it, and I don't know enough about what they do. My concern is when you, is if the county gets out of this business, to put it simply, and the state now handles it, then you have orders from the state, and if mandates come down, where do you stand? Do we supersede that as a county, or does the state say, "Uh-uh, we're telling you this, these..." That's my concern. Bigger government, bigger mandates, telling us what to do in our county.
All those programs are state programs, whether they're delegated or contracted, and some are national ones with the Chesapeake Bay. So, they do control, but they expect us to pay.
Well, I understand that part of it. Well, they, but, but he who controls the purse, and that's where I have, that's where I'm concerned in the long run.
Well, our purse is getting smaller and smaller.
No, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about, we're from the government, we're here to help. You folks in Susquehanna, you're nice folks, but we're telling you, you don't tell us.
I sit on, I sit on the State Conservation Commission also, and in sitting there, I have told DEP and PDA that we need more monies, that delegated programs, there is no way. Counties have delegated programs because the state can't do it. They don't come out. So, that's why counties have those delegated programs to do, because we have the people, the local people, that know the environment, know where the streams are, know, know the people, go to church, go to...
Will those people still be in place? Will they be in place?
Yes. Yes. We actually have three board members sitting in our audience. This is not something that we're doing that underhanded or anything. I'd like it documented in the minutes, that this was a mutual agreement, if I may, so that 20 years from now, somebody doesn't read the minutes and say, "Those three SOBs did this to the county."
There are no minutes.
It was a mutual. You can go to YouTube.
There are no minutes. I'll have to go.
And I will say, and tackle what Commissioner Warren just said. You know, I've had the opportunity, and I know some of the board members personally from soil conservation at the local level, you know, all of these people that sit on this board are great people, and they believe in what they're doing, and they're trying to do a great job. And what this will do for them will give them total control of their organization, which is what they need to continue to move forward. And we need to work with them as a county to continue to go through this transition to make sure that everything goes smoothly, and make sure that they get what they need to operate. Yes, all.
I'd like to hear Lauren's thought, because she's been involved with this for a long time, longer than Mary Ann.
I don't have a great deal to say except that I want the commissioners to know that we truly appreciate, and perhaps we haven't shown our appreciation the way we have in the past few years. We appreciate all of the support that we have gotten from county commissioners for 65 years. And I think we have done an exemplary job. We have brought millions of dollars to the county to help farmers, loggers, and every segment of society, including the children in our schools. We have provided education that has been immeasurable for these 65 years. And I just want you to know that I appreciate you, and I think we will go forward and we will, we will survive this. And I'm sorry that we could not come to a meeting of the minds on the memorandum of understanding.
I think it's a positive move forward.
Yes.
Yeah, I just have one concern. In doing this, would we be at risk of any fines from the state, national? Okay, thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Uh-uh. Public comment?
Yes, public comment.
This, I...
Wait, wait, before we get to public comments. Motion to approve. We have a motion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, public comment.
Okay, I address this to all of you, but you brought it up now, Commissioner Warren. Isn't this a wonderful reason to actually write down minutes?
I asked that if you put in the minutes, I don't know if it will be on the minority here.
There are no minutes. We both know that.
We do have minutes.
No, you don't.
I think that Commissioner Jean Greco had something in the minutes two months back.
I could go pull back minutes from January 2008, and the only thing the minutes consist of is a rehash of the agenda. No public comment, no discussion by either the commissioners or the public is in there. And we both know, we all know that.
And there was something from Commissioner Jean Greco, because we had to reopen a meeting. Was Commissioner Jean Greco on?
There's minutes of every meeting. There's minutes.
There's minutes. There may not be discussion, but I'm asking for discussion, for part of this discussion to be part of the minutes, to go forward.
And I will say, and then you can cut me off, Commissioner Hall, there are no minutes that contain discussion between the commissioners from the public as to what goes on at these meetings.
Well, I'm asking that this be included in these minutes. I don't know if it will be.
I'll interject. You can't, Mary Ann. As much as I would love it, you can't use your power to put your statements in when none of us can do. And if you do that, I'm in sort of a township. When I read the minutes from our meeting that I attend, it has what I said. It's a synopsis. I've been to Montrose, even though they won't let me speak because I'm not that fair, they have minutes. And everyone knows that has to enter the paper every week, but it's in the minutes what we said. I was in there, even though I had to raise my hand and say objection, and they still put it in as an objecting comment. So, I would love to have your comments in, but if your comments go in and they show up in the next one, then I'm going to have to go talk to Jason Legg. Not because your comments are good.
Well, Commissioner Jean Greco had something put in the minutes two months back.
Well, great, then I'll make something out of that. All I'm saying is, I find it very interesting, this is the only body I've been to speak with.
Okay, I'll put it on Facebook. I don't really care.
There you go. Doesn't matter. No, I love that you asked to put it on. I hope it gets on there, but then we'll come after it. But my follow-up was, in relation to this, my forester was up at my house yesterday. He's been on my property for two years. He can't get rid of his wood. Can't sell the wood he cuts. Cannot sell it. Nobody's got it, they're overloaded with wood. The industry's come in, they're cutting all the pipelines, floss through, they're chopping down all the trees for the swell pads. They've overloaded the entire system with logs of all types. The price of all of it has dropped to the bottom, so anybody that has 150-acre forests like I do, that wants to have some cleaning done so that it's good for my children, my grandchildren, it's worth nothing. It's valueless. So, if you guys can look into this, this is a huge problem. If they're going to cut all these trees down here, have them do it, truck it somewhere else, so that they can keep the value of our timber in this local area, in the county, worth something. It's worth nothing. He had to beg to have people take wood, not just for my property, but of many of my neighbors. And I find it very interesting, just like the gas price has plummeted, and they're crying about that. But now the price of all of our timber, that's a value. Some people have a huge, Mike has a huge property, I have a fairly big-sized property, most people do here, that has all this timber on it. That is a commodity. And if my gas price has dropped in the toilet, now my tree price has dropped in the toilet, what does that do to us? That's something that we can actually market to have money to pay taxes and things, not if when they cut it, they can't even get rid of it. So, that's a concern I'd like to see voiced by you guys, is to say, "Hey, our timber is also part of the resources in Susquehanna County. Why are you guys coming and making it valueless? Put it on a truck and take it to Ohio, just like you do all the waste and all the frac fluids, and sell it over there so it doesn't plummet the price of our timber here in the county." Thank you.
Any last comments?
So, it looks like that we have more positive results from gas drilling. Another positive result after all that's been going on for five years. So, more things, nice, positive things to look forward to.
I agree.
Okay. I would request that the commissioners revisit the idea of actually following the sunshine law and keeping real minutes. I'm not asking you to write down everything I say or Craig says or any member of the public, but certainly the exchange is what they were about, certainly the sum and substance encapsulated. You're on YouTube. If you wind up in court, which is always a possibility, you're on YouTube anyway. Why not just do it like every other township and borough in the county does? What is the big deal?
Robert's Rule says that the minutes contain what is done, not what is said.
You are, you're outside of...
And I'll stand by that.
Every other township and borough does rights of short term.
I don't care what every other township and borough does. We follow Robert's Rules of Order. Robert's Rules of Order say that the minutes consist of what is done, not what is said. Because you start putting in things that are said, and you're opening up a whole big camp, this is all that is required.
This can was open up until January 2008. Minutes were kept, and in some meetings prior to that, videotapes were kept. So, I don't know why it stopped in January '08, but I don't think it should have.
I don't recall it ever being there.
I could prove it to you.
You probably could, I just don't recall.
I just want a comment that I think a lot of times, things are brought by the public that the commissioners really don't have control over. And, you know, and there are some things that should have been handled with contracts in the very beginning as far as the gas industry, such as timber. Some people take the value of their timber, some people take it and use it as fireworks, some take it and they have it to saw it up for lumber for themselves to use, you know. I think we need to respect what the commissioners can and cannot actually act on, otherwise we're wasting time.
You may follow Robert's Rules of Order, but this is a public body, and the controlling laws are the sunshine laws and the right-to-know laws. Robert's rules conduct how you rule how you conduct a meeting, but they don't conduct how you keep minutes. It's in the sunshine laws. We can give you a copy of them any time you want.
And it says official testimony, so also in court, if ever got there. We could, I could bring you a stack this high, just this year, of the recording of it in every township in this county. Every township, every one of them does it. And the lack of it being done in that period of time puts you at odds with what's already going on with every elected body in the county. So, it's a protection mechanism. We're asking you to do it to protect yourselves, not that we're demanding it. We can go on YouTube just like you can and see it. There's another problem. If a judge looks at YouTube and all these people spend 30 minutes making public comments, and not one name or one word of what they said is on there, that is legally actionable, and we don't want you guys to put yourself in a legally actionable position. Why not just write down who spoke and a little brief statement of a few words they said, and then if they want to catch the rest, put it at the bottom, we'll see it on YouTube. I mean, that's what I would do, just to protect ourselves.
Motion to adjourn.
Are you, I'm just wondering, are you avoiding public comments, the recording of it, because you want to avoid lawsuits? Are you afraid of a lawsuit?
No. Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Treasurer Benedict, signed by Christian Warren to adjourn. All in favor? Aye.
9:47.
I don't know, it's, what time, what clock do you use? Because over there it says 9:44.
Clock on the phone. The officials have that time.
Clock on the phone? You like that map, right?
It goes through every office.
This is the Bradford County map of all our, of all their wells, their units, their well sites, over 1,000 wells, and this is, it's actually upside down, but I guess it doesn't, but it's being held by Bruce here. And it's, the latest date on it is February 1st, 2013, and we'd like to have a map like this for our county. What do you think, Mr. Hall?
Can you go to DEP, though, and bring up the map of all the wells? From my understanding, DEP has that available for every county.
Well, see if you can find it. I'm on DEP's...
I'll check the website.
Yes, I've been on the DEP site plenty of times, so I'll see if you can find it. So, this is the map, Bradford County gas activity, and it's not fully developed yet after five years.